Good evening. Can we all at least stand for our pledge allegiance? Our pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Great. Well, thanks. Thanks for everybody for coming out tonight. It should be fairly right to the point and short even. So if we could, I'll do group call. Ekin here, Thomas.
Here.
Strubrin.
Here.
You're here?
Yes.
And I'm here. Beautiful. So business, discuss location and construction of new public works facility engineered by Goral Palmer.
Hi, everybody. I'm just saying a little overview. I sent the email out just a week ago, but I've just had to go through the history of how this has come about. The new public works facility has been in the town's capital plan for a number of years. By starting on the start of the history of public works, it was in ninety-four when the town first started public work. So a garage was built in front of the transfer station. It was meant to house three single trucks, three single dump trucks, axle dump trucks and a one-ton truck when it had seven employees. Since then, the garage had an expansion that was put on thirty feet by ninety feet. And we have grown to twenty-two employees as well as part-time winter help and the transfer station help at the public works facility. Obviously, the town is growing. Our infrastructure is growing in roadways needs. We used to contract out a lot of services. We now have fourteen plow routes for the town for that and a full-time technician in the garage. We are also doing maintenance for other town departments. So the fire department, rec department is now bringing maintenance issues to our location that the technicians are working on. And it's basically just at a time that with the growth of the town and the equipment and the investment that the town is putting into this equipment, we need to be able to care for this equipment. I mean, these trucks are three hundred thousand dollars. Yes, we use them in the winter and in the storms, but sun and just sitting outside does damage in the summertime because these trucks aren't used year-round. You know, hydraulic rock type of deal, when I'm saying hydraulic, we're talking about hoses, stuff like that, other care and maintenance to these vehicles. So our current facility, we don't have enough room. One of the issues at our current facility is we have non-drinkable water. So we buy all of our water in because of the old landfill that is across the street. The landfill, we are the, last year we were one of the highest PFAS landfill in the state of Maine, making it so it's non-drinkable. So that's why it's non-drinkable. It's really high in sulfur. Also, someone who washes the trucks will see water spots everywhere type of deal. We talk about, we wash outside. Do we have a catch system in place? No, we don't. We try not to obviously any type of spills or oils or anything like that. It's just some of the stuff that our facility lacks currently. We lack a large enough lunchroom for all of our employees. I can comfortably fit twelve to fourteen depending on the size, but when you put everybody in there, we go and eat in our offices because there's not enough room for everybody who's there for a storm to be able to be there. We talk about storage. If you walk into our current facility, our walls are just lined. We're out of space for the equipment that we need to do the job. So when we talk about machinery as well, there's areas and stuff like that. There's just no room left. So hand tools, we have that one area that's all piled with stuff. We have a sign room that's upstairs. We're just outgrown our space. And like I said, it's more keeping up with the needs of the town to be able to do that while we're looking for a larger facility to maintain for the equipment. So in two thousand nineteen, the town purchased land from what I call the, on Moody Road, from the S-curve, prior to the transfer station, after the solar field, to our current lot where the new, where the sand building is. That lot was purchased with the intent of a new public works facility being in there. In two thousand twenty-three, Director Mosley had asked in his budget that went to the voters for engineering money for a conceptual design for that lot. We started with Ranksom, who was the previous town engineer. But they pretty much, their civil engineering department stopped pretty much for the most part, and we've transferred to Goral Palmer. During that time, I had them try to get a conceptual design ready for last year's budget because that was the year that this was supposed to, the voters was last year. They put a design together, the cost and the size of the building. We met with an architect to determine the needs of the town with future growth of the town. So we're building a building that still has room for us to grow and are looking for the lot. So I'm gonna let Ryan describe basically why the differences. But I decided that lot was not ideal for the town. So I said, I don't want to take something that is not ideal for the town, is not what I feel best for the town, to the voters and just settle for it. So we looked at other options. One of the other options that we looked at was this lot that was originally purchased for a rec building back in two thousand six at the corner of Northeast Road and Moody Road, right there. And to see if that lot was usable and could meet the needs of the town. And again, Ryan will go over that. This new facility will also have a bay. It will be multi-use. So when I talk about, the fire department has a technician, but it will put all the technicians under one roof. So it is a multipurpose building, meaning that the fire department technician would come to public works and they would have their own dedicated bay with that. And that, and like I said, the architect helped determine the size building, the town is, that is needed for what we have for staff, employees and equipment. That's how we come up with the building size. And I'll turn it over to Ryan Barnes from Goral Palmer. He's an engineer from them.
Thank you, John. And thank your council for listening to us this evening. As John mentioned, we've looked at two different sites. We originally were just looking at the one site. And once we realized that there were some constraints that I'll review in a little bit more detail later, we realized that it would maybe challenge to meet the needs of the town at that facility, especially with the growth that you're currently seeing. So just a quick little overview about me, just because I have a background that I think is kind of unique. Because I spent twenty-five years doing engineering. I spent half my career as a municipal engineer, as both a town engineer and public works director, and I spent half my career in the private sector. I've actually just returned to private after fourteen years in public sector to help out other municipalities. I'm currently the secretary of the main chapter of the DWA and I'm actually the president-elect for the chapter. So I kind of did the degree in public works that I have and gives me a very unique perspective on planning and budgeting for municipal needs. So a brief overview of things we're gonna review tonight. And we'll be looking at both sites kind of in a back-to-back method to make hopefully comparison easy. So we'll review the existing conditions of both sites and what their constraints are. We'll look at the different site selection criteria. We'll evaluate those space and needs or bulk needs that John was referring to. We'll do a comparison of the two sites and then we'll be happy to take any questions that anyone has. So first, looking at the existing conditions of the facility. Obviously, it's not set up the cleanest from a circulation standpoint. It consists of approximately a sixty-five-hundred-square-foot garage and office space. It's got above-ground fueling. It's got an eight-hundred-and-fifty-square-foot storage building, an additional five-hundred-square-foot storage building that you might be able to put stuff in, but it looks kind of tedious. You've got the transfer station to the rear of it, which really prevents a lot of extension opportunities. You've got the eighteen-hundred-square-foot sand shed, twelve-thousand-square-foot salt shed, and kind of scattered throughout the site, you've got miscellaneous storage. So that right there, when I look at public works facilities or any municipal facility, is a dead giveaway that you've outgrown your facility. All of those things that are stored haphazardly through the site are things that should be consolidated in a more clean, professional, easy-to-maintain fashion rather than kind of stuck out in the back area of the snowbank. I'll do respect for that, by the way. So as John mentioned, we looked at two different sites. The original one was a site that's just to the south of the existing facility. The second site is right at the corner of Route Thirty-Five and Moody Road. Both have advantages and disadvantages, and we're gonna review those with you tonight. So the first site that we looked at was the site we refer to as Moody Road site. It's the one adjacent to the existing facility. One of the largest, or I guess two constraints, and actually let me pull up a laser pointer so I can point to things and you can see it. You've got a stream that's bisecting the site, which becomes challenging because the stream, not only is this wetland area something you really can't build in, but there's a seventy-five-foot setback from that as well in both directions. In addition, you can get that shrunk down to twenty-five feet, but that's still a rather large footprint that's bisecting your site. The second thing that's very challenging is you've got really steep slopes here. These slopes are between three-to-one and four-to-one, which means that it's three feet horizontal for every one foot vertical. Those are really challenging grades to build access roads on, parking lots on, buildings on because you're going to need a lot of fill to do so. So looking at this, the only portion of the site that's really developable is this portion over here on the side closest to the salt shed, just because these grades and the small footprint prohibit from being able to put anything there that would be useful. So again, the whole site itself is six-point-seven acres with a stream that bisects it and the steep slopes are highlighted in that area. And as John mentioned earlier, this facility does not have portable water because of groundwater contamination. That means that there are systems that you can use to fix that, but they're very expensive to maintain. And right now, the rules, regulations behind drinking water PFAS contamination is changing. So there's a pretty good wild card in that and it's definitely going in the safe side direction. The second site we've looked at is the Route Thirty-Five site. Overall, it's a bigger site. It's almost eight acres total. Another thing I didn't mention on the previous slide that this has, the other one doesn't, is that this is a rectangular site. Makes fitting things into it a lot easier rather than having kind of a triangular shape like the other site had. There are wetlands. So what you see is blue on these maps are wetlands. The important thing with wetlands to remember is that there are wetlands that are considered of special significance and there are ones that are not. And I'll get into that in a little bit more detail, fortunately, views are not, but I'll go into that as we move further down. And then, whoops, sorry. I guess that's where I was gonna do it. So the wetlands were all analyzed by Flycatcher LLC out of Yarmouth. They looked at the types of wetlands, the classifications, the functions and values, is what it's called. So basically determining what kind of habitat, if any, there is in them. And when they're doing that, they're looking for a couple of different things. The biggest thing they're looking for at this site is the presence of burnout pools. Burnout pools are pools that could present habitat for salamanders, frogs, ferret shrimp, and they're protected if they're considered to be a significant burnout pool. We had all of these analyzed and none of them were determined to be significant burnout pools because they did not have the presence of enough egg masses to reach that classification. So that means that they aren't considered wetlands of special significance, which means that through proper permitting through the main DEP and the Army Corps, most of these can be filled in. This is, I'll mention it previously, logged site. It was at one point cleared completely twenty-five, thirty years ago. Some of these wetlands may be pocketed just from those operations as well as just natural topography. But anytime you have a formally logged site, you have a higher risk of finding things like burnout pools. So we actually had Flycatcher come in and do their evaluation before we started doing any work, before we hired a surveyor, because we knew that their evaluation couldn't determine that this site isn't viable. So we've got that out of the way last April, which is the burnout pool season. And based on that, we determined that we should proceed with the study to look at feasibility of this site. So as far as the space and bulk needs, again, John mentioned that the public works team, I guess, or employees has more than doubled in the last thirty years. I think they're gonna continue to see growth in, right now, the population of standards is around eleven thousand. It's only going to increase. There've been lots of subdivisions approved recently. So you're going to see an influx of new residents. And I only know that because we also do peer reviews for all of those. And so I'm very familiar with all the residential subdivisions that have been through. So essentially what happens during a space and bulk needs assessment is that we hired Michael Hayes from Your Handcapes Architects to look at the existing facility, review what the existing facility has for equipment, personnel, and what the future needs of the community are gonna be as they grow, as well as trying to modernize the operation. Because anything that's been around for over thirty years probably can use some modernization. So looking at that, he was able to determine that the municipal garage portion on the site should be approximately seventeen thousand one hundred square feet and that the useful office portion would be approximately thirty-six hundred square feet. The intent is to have that be a combined building, so it would be a total footprint of that building of twenty thousand seven hundred square feet. Where one side of it is the office space and the remainder of it is the municipal garage. In addition to that, we looked at other options rather than trying to store the trucks and other equipment within the municipal garage, just because you can do it cheaper in either a cold storage or I usually refer to them as a lukewarm storage building, where you usually put in furnace heaters or something in the ceiling to try to get enough heat to melt snow off of vehicles in the wintertime, but not to the point where, you know, it's normally where you would want to be hanging out. It's usually in the forty-to-fifty-degree range. So with that in mind, it was recommended that this facility include ten enclosed days of that cold storage as well as kind of on the backside of that building, lean-to storage, which basically means that there would be no front garage doors to it. It would have a roof. It would have walls on each end that do some dividing demarcations. But that's where you can store things like cones, signs, message boards, things that you want to get out of the elements that don't necessarily need to be fully enclosed for the entire winter. In addition to that, fuel station was important that it be updated as part of this project and just providing some additional space for things like bulk storage of gravel, sands, crushed stone, those sorts of materials. So originally, like I said, we did a feasibility study, kind of morphed into a site comparison study once we had the second site. So we came up with a matrix of kind of evaluations of the site. The evaluation included things like site area, garage and office space that we can fit on the site, how much cold storage can we fit, can it accommodate a fuel station? And most importantly, it doesn't have room for future expansion. Because what we build now, we hope, will last a hundred years. So hopefully, if you need more in thirty years, there's expansion possibilities. Water supply was a big one because of the contamination of the existing facility. We also evaluated it based on wetland impacts since both sites have wetlands. For a main DEP, since it's in the watershed, Sabego Lake for both of them, that we need to make sure that they have enough space to be able to do the stormwater treatment that's required to meet the phosphorus standards for those areas as well as the other standards. And then looking at the ability to phase the projects because we understand that trying to build all of this in one fell swoop might be too much at the beginning. But so we were looking at ways that sites could be phased if necessary for price. And then, of course, construction cost is a big question that always comes up. So that obviously is a big deciding factor in these evaluations. So for a comparison point, I'm gonna go through kind of both sites, what they can and can't do. So going through first the Moody Road site, again, it's six-point-seven acres, plus or minus. It can accommodate the twenty-seven-hundred, sorry, the twenty-thousand-seven-hundred-square-foot garage. That's this building you see here. Because of the gradient, it cannot accommodate that nineteen-thousand-two-hundred-square-foot cold storage or storage building. We were able to only fit on this site a seventy-two-hundred-square-foot storage building, which is what you see here. This is a little bit of a challenge because the back wall of this will actually act essentially as a retaining wall for the slopes in order to make it work. But it is something that is feasible to be constructed, but the circulation is not the best. Normally, you'd want to be able to drive all the way around, have multiple entrances and exits. A second entrance is not possible or exit because of grades both coming from Moody Road and going up to the salt shed. So this area here, this is a rather large cut. It's about a ten-foot cut from Moody Road down to the parking lot. And then you have about a ten-foot cut back on the side to get back up to the salt shed access road. So having a second point of access is not possible on this site. Because of the circulation concerns, a fuel would not be able to be accommodated on this site. It would have to be accommodated somewhere else. We did review the possibility of putting it, either at the transfer, moving it to the transfer station or trying to site it somewhere else. And it can be done, but it becomes more challenging because they just require a lot of mobility and circulation around them and it's good to keep them kind of visible so that you can see what's going on. Again, the steeper site grades mean that we have some pretty significant fills. So we have a ten-foot cut in front of the building, about a ten-foot fill in the rear of the building. So you end up with some pretty large fees or costs associated with that because you end up with a lot more fill than you do cut. So you're actually hauling in a lot of material to kind of level off the land. Then again, the access and mobility is somewhat hampered because of the fact that you only have one access. That means that you're gonna have trucks driving around where you have employee parking, where you have lizard parking. Generally, when you can try to separate those circulation movements to the best of your ability, it tends to make for a safer environment because people that are unfamiliar with the site are the ones that are most likely to do something that's unexpected to the driver or to anyone else who's operating that piece of equipment. Expansion on the site is very limited. In fact, I would almost say it's not feasible without going into some rather large retaining walls on the backside of the site to make that possible. Wetland impacts, the only impacts to wetlands with this proposed site would be those seventy-five-foot setbacks, like I said, which is good. So that is positive. Stormwater treatment for the site would have to be under the pavement because you can't put them on slopes like you have on the back of the building and around it. And I should have mentioned earlier that these slopes are all anticipated to be riprap slopes, so they'd be two-to-one slopes, so they'd be rather steep in order to tie it back in because otherwise you'd be chasing them to the edge of the property. But by putting the stormwater treatment under pavement, it creates future maintenance issues because obviously if you ever have to dig up a portion of them, you're digging up in the pavement and you're also digging up in your circulation area. So if you end up putting some stormwater treatment in this area and in this area, for example, if you ever have to maintain them, these site, these garage stores would not be usable at the time that they're doing that work. So it's less than ideal, obviously. And then in order to get portable water to the site, you have to extend the water main that currently is in Route Thirty-Five all the way down to this site, which is approximately six thousand feet. And has a cost of around two-and-a-half million dollars associated with it. So moving on to our Route Thirty-Five site. You can see it's completely, it's a lot different setup, a little bit more spread out, more room for mobility. So it's an eight-acre site, as we discussed earlier. It does accommodate the twenty-thousand-seven-hundred-square-foot office space as well as the nineteen-thousand-two-hundred-square-foot cold storage building. So just for reference, this front building is that municipal garage and office space, and this would be the storage building. The fuel island can be accommodated on-site, which is this rectangle here. For the purpose of this evaluation, we assume that that would be above-ground storage tanks, likely a diesel-gasoline split tank, you know, with most of it being diesel. But you can split them ten thousand, five thousand, twelve, three, however you want to split them, based on your needs. So that can be accommodated here. The reason for being above-ground is because of the wetlands as well as the fact that you're in the Sabo Lake watershed. So permitting-wise, it'll be easier to go above ground and they're double-wall tanks anyway, so they can be protected. Additional storage that wasn't available on the other site is this area that I'm highlighting here. That's where we kind of envisioned additional storage for things like small quantities of gravel, crushed stone, you know, bin materials that they're gonna use if they have to go out and do a repair in the middle of the night so that they don't have to go haul them in from somewhere else. Is expansion possible? Absolutely. You've got lots of room and we would design it, you know, these are just conceptual designs. If it goes for a preliminary design, we would obviously look into not putting any solid features in place where we're gonna be doing potential expansion in the future, such as the septic system, the stormwater treatment areas. And I do want to highlight that as far as an expansion goes, there's this rather large rectangle here that could either be used as part of that future expansion or it could accommodate another town facility on that site. So we have looked at that to see if there's other uses that can be done here as well. Again, portable water is available right at Route Thirty-Five, so our water service would just come in straight. It'd be a traditional water service. You're not funding a mile and a quarter of water main to accommodate this site. And with wetland impacts are about point-eight-five acres, which would be into a tier-two permit with the DEP. Again, since they're not wetlands of special significance, that's something that isn't a huge hurdle for permitting standpoint because they're not considered wetlands of special significance. And then, the, one of the major hinges, whoops, sorry, to this site is that it has phaseability. So if you wanted to build in a first phase, and sometimes this is just because it means you don't have all the different trades and contractors on top of each other, is that you could build municipal garage and a fuel island in the first phase, followed by the cold storage and kind of the rear parking and circulation area. So it gives you kind of some options on how you want to phase things if funding is, if you're looking to spread the funding out over several years instead of just a single season. And I should say that it's probably a twelve-to-eighteen-month construction window to build one of these facilities typically, depending on what we end up going with for faceting and everything else. There are some, any kind of meeting in the middle is usually the best alternative with these. So you get a little bit quicker. It's not just a step kit building, but it gives you a little bit more flexibility. So looking at the comparison, you'll see that there's some greens on here. So obviously, the greens are the things that are good. So the site area for Route Thirty-Five is obviously larger and configured better than it is for Moody Road. They both accommodate the municipal garage, but only the Route Thirty-Five site has the ability to hold not only that nineteen-thousand-two-hundred-square-foot cold storage building, but also either a future municipal building of another sort or future expansion for this facility. A fuel station would be close but not within the facility for the Moody Road site because of circulation, and it can be accommodated at this facility, at the Route Thirty-Five facility. There's very limited possibility for expansion at Moody Road, whereas at Route Thirty-Five, you have quite a bit of possibility. So from a water supply standpoint, you'd have a six-thousand-foot water main extension, which like I said, is about a two-and-a-half-million-dollar price tag versus just a water service for the other facility. And the two-and-a-half-million dollars is just for the water main. Either way, you're still gonna have to put in the same type of water service, so those prices are comparable. Wetland impacts for the site, you know, one benefit to the Moody Road site is that it is only impacting the setback. But again, the wetland impacts for the Route Thirty-Five site are less than an acre of wetlands that aren't of special significance. So that's not, it's not a critical factor in this assessment. Stormwater treatment from Moody Road would have to be under the existing pavement, or the proposed pavement, which again is not ideal from a maintenance standpoint, whereas Route Thirty-Five could be a surface treatment, either an underground soil filter or most likely something like a gravel wetland. Their surface features, they actually don't, they're not unattractive. They have plants in them that look nice. They can be kind of part of the kind of vibrant landscaping package for the project, just to kind of tie everything together. So the most important part, price. So construction cost, the opinion of probable construction cost for the Moody Road site is eleven-point-seven-million dollars. That does include the two-and-a-half-million dollars for the water main, which there are state grants available for those types of projects, but they're very competitive. And right now, pretty much every grant writer or grant group I know with the state is on hold. So we don't know when those grants become available and they're very competitive when they do become available. So it's very challenging to base your decision on that solely. They, that reimbursement would be up to one million dollars. So in theory, if you were able to get that, that would bring that price down. But this Route Thirty-Five site is only a little point, four million dollars, and that's for a full build. So it's not, you gotta keep in mind that that's for a building, a cold storage building is twelve-thousand-square-feet bigger. It has the fuel island, it has the full facility, it has that capability for future expansion. So although the prices are similar, it's not a straight comparison of what you're actually getting on the site. Because that, you know, it takes into account all of the site work associated with the building, the bin areas for storage. the bin areas for storing of aggregates and other materials, all kind of wrapped into one. So that, and I hope that was brief enough. I would be happy to answer any questions.
Can you tell them, like, if we were to build like a one-phase section, what your estimate would be on that? So I'm saying one phase would be on the Route thirty-five section, not the whole.
Forgot to look that up before I came here, but I can look at it really quickly. And I can do half in my head, if you want. You'd be saving approximately three million dollars with that price tag. Three to three-and-a-half because there's also some additional pavement gravels that'd be associated with that. But also magnitude, prices go up as quantities go down. So I think three-and-a-half, or about three to three-and-a-half million is probably the range you would be in.
Great. Thank you for that.
Yep.
A lot of, a lot of great information. I'm sure we have a few questions and things like that. So does this, I mean, it's a big facility. Does it take into account for any, or how much of like future growth is, is like, kind of like estimated? Is there like, are you adding on a ten percent growth for if we have to, so we don't have to do this again, like in, so you're, I'm trying to ask the question in a right way, but like.
It's projected to be able to facilitate for thirty employees and additional equipment. So when you look at the architect, he upsized to what that would be type of deal. Like I said, we're also getting a lot more things that we wouldn't have a bay. Currently, fire department does some of their maintenance here, or we do it up to our location. So as far as that, we'd have a dedicated bay in there. A wash bay, which we currently do not have for any of the town vehicles type of deal, is within that new facility. And then like a locker room, lunchroom, like I said, to be able, a complete locker room for storage for the employees. Because, you know, weather, when working elements, obviously we need to change sometimes because of that. And currently, we're very limited on that type, but what we have at our current facility.
Perfect. All right. All right, Mr. Deacon.
Where's the nearest fire hydrant?
Um, obviously, Moody Road nearest hydrant is Route thirty-five. The nearest fire hydrant on Route thirty-five, it's one on the corner, isn't it?
There's one right at the corner, shows the middle, and I know that.
Yeah. I always wanted, general recency, but I don't know the word.
The tentile mile or something?
We would likely be installing a new hydrant as a result of this project anyway.
A new hydrant close to the building?
Wow, a new hydrant. Because you're putting such an investment into the facility, even though it's gonna be sprinkled a lot of times, you still run a hydrant hook-up as well at the same time. It's, once you're doing all the other connections, it's not that big of an increase in cost, but it just gives you some protection in the future.
So you did mention three-hundred-something feet of water extension.
Yep.
Still with this, and that's about how much?
Ah, three hundred feet would run you roughly fifty thousand dollars. And that's comparable to what you would need for the Moody Road site as well.
The old site would have displaced the sand salt pile?
It would have displaced, uh, displaced that, it would have displaced some of the kind of miscellaneous storage areas that have been kind of creeping out from the facility.
It wouldn't have displaced that deal?
No, the sand salt pile, we'd be, we'd be fully away from the sand salt pile. We'd be using their access road.
We'd use their road.
Yeah.
Okay, if this was to have been used by a rec, is there a need for a rec location somewhere else now?
That's another question I was asking, Alison.
So we've talked about, I think it's town, time for the town to do a master plan. Like what are the needs of the town that want to come? Is, we talked about that extra area, I believe it can, we just talked rough numbers, nineteen thousand square feet, square foot building, right?
Yeah, nineteen to twenty.
Is that a rec building? Is that a fire department? Does the rec go out back here? Does the rec go to the old garage and then get rehab? What, what, we're, just like I said, we're talking about a master plan for the town. Unfortunately, I'd love to stay wherever I am because it's right there. But the problem is, is the lot does not work and I cannot expand where I'm currently at. You know, that's.
The rec building might go to that other old lot.
That red air, but could do that?
Could go to the expansion here or to the old lot that you're not gonna use.
Correct.
And where are the electric charging stations?
It's not shown at this level of conceptual plan.
So you may want to think about that. Just, I think it's as part of the design process, we may not have a lot of electric vehicles now, but there's probably something coming along the way. If it's gonna keep this facility for a long while, think of it so that even if we don't put in charging stations, that you know that they have to be a certain distance from the gas fuel stations or something. So just think about it, so the conceptual process allows for that in the neighborhood as you go forward.
Yeah, there is no reason you wouldn't be able to accommodate EV-capable parking spaces at either location. It would be easier to accommodate them here just because you're closer to the source of the power. Because three-phase doesn't currently go all the way down to the current facility.
Yeah, it's self-sustained.
So you'd have to, if you ever run EV charging stations, you'd likely have to run three-phase power down the rest of the way. You'd probably need to do that if you want to upgrade the public works anyway. That's not a cost that we incorporated. We should have that as a disclaimer because it's unknown until we know everything that's going into it. But yeah, EV charging stations, I have a fire station that's out to bid right now that's got six of them. So definitely understand it and I'm an advocate for doing what I call EV-capable spaces, where you run the conduit now for future connection later so that you're not digging up and paving them. Because a couple of conduits now is cheap compared to digging up pavement later. Thank you. Yep, absolutely.
Um, two quick questions. The, the first phase, the one that you're, that you are saying could save like three million on that, on that diagram?
That's this one back here.
Yep, so that would not be included?
If you decided not to.
It's all, it's all about how we'd want to put it to the voters, so. And this is where I guess I'm looking for some council comment type of deal. You know, is this something that's gonna be supported? You know, Thomas has got just around a ration going to their current building of thirteen million dollars. And I would say, oh yeah, this is, this is a need of the town, but where does this need fit into the town? In that, we have a bunch of needs in town, but where do we want to put this need? You know, like I said, well, it's supposed to go to the voters last year in the capital plan. Is this a need that we want to put right, you know, in there? I can't answer that. And that's, that's where I'm looking for, because we're here having this meeting because budget seizing's coming right up. So if this is something that's gonna go to the voters, basically December, January is when the capital plan gets approved again. Of, is this something that we're gonna go take through the budget process? I see it as a need, but is that something that council sees as a need?
Right. So if, if that building is not included in the, the three million dollars, is the drainage installed in there and the building is just not put on? Is the drainage done before any of the big buildings are put on?
Essentially, you would just be ending the parking lot pavement at this location. Right, the face of the building would be.
We would put the stormwater still to facilitate that building for the future growth. So that would be another long question forever. We want to put that into the capital plan if we choose to break it out that way. Would we put that five years down the road in the capital plan? Or?
Yep, and then for clarification, the, the cold storage, wash bay, and work bay drainage, all goes into the stormwater treatment area?
Uh, no, they actually go into.
Well, there's separation for the wash base. So there's tanks that have to be, the catch tanks that have to be installed and engineered as far as the wash base. There's certain regulations with that. But the, um, sign stuff would still go through the stormwater regular treatment.
Basically, any of the pavement area, any of the roof area, all of that would end up going to the stormwater treatment areas. Anything inside the buildings, like floor drains, the wash base, anything that could have hydrocarbons or other contaminants within it.
Oil stuff?
Yep, we'd go through an oil water separator and then go into a storage tank. And that storage tank would get all the way for treatment.
Thank you. And then can you clarify, when you, we're talking about the rec building, you mean like the bus barn and the stuff they have stored here? Or are you talking about a recreation building that people have asked?
So the original, back in two thousand and six, was, they were designed to build, I don't know the size of it, but maybe something the size of two-thirty by ninety as a community sector. I mean, there was one time there was talk about a pool and everything else in them.
And a track and everything.
Yeah.
Great.
Question?
No questions or comments, in particular. Standish is growing. Every other community in greater Portland is growing. And I think it's gonna continue and I think these, this area that we've chosen, if it is chosen, I think it's got to be for the people. I don't see, you're, you're a good man, this is your job, you brought the floor up. And I can see some of the questions that are gonna go out. Your, your experience, I sound, makes me feel good. And we have a good guy, a crap here, and a good town council, or not too afraid to speak up. But those questions key are gonna be, and they might be a special area for people doing this. That's all I feel. I'm gonna be watching it very closely and hopefully.
And I'll just, I'll just elaborate on one quick point if I could, and not that we'll even elaborate, but in preparation for tonight, I actually had a very long conversation with a former Public Works Director from Cape Elizabeth. He works part-time for us now. He was there for thirty-four years. He was there when they built, he started there in nineteen eighty-six. He was there when they built their new Public Works facility fourteen years later. He retired from there in twenty, in twenty-twenty-three. And he said that a Public Works facility is a community asset that needs to be planned properly and keep in mind for the future. And Bob Nally is probably one of the most respected Public Works Directors in Southern Maine. So when he said that, it was something I had to write down because it was just, it's something that resonates. I've worked on a lot of these projects, but I've never had it put so eloquently as he put it and.
Ryan doesn't give himself a lot of credit, though. I mean, he was projects, Public Works Director, town engineer. I mean, he's also been sitting where I sit and knows what we need to get the job done.
Yeah, that's my unique perspective as I understand the budget issues.
The cold storage building?
Yep.
That will be big enough to house all of our trucks now in?
In future.
How much room will it have for future trucks?
Well, it all depends on how large a trucks, we're talking like pickups versus dump trucks to that. So if we're talking dump trucks, I believe that they put in for two more additional dump trucks.
Yeah, and typically with that future expansion, you have other equipment that doesn't necessarily need to be stored outside, or inside rather, but it's beneficial to do it anyway. So usually you put things like pickup trucks or the less expensive equipment in there in the short term, which helps their longevity. And then when you expand to need those, then they become that. I think with all the subdivisions that are up right now, they'll have over-acceptances with them. John's probably gonna need more trucks.
So another thing, like, it doesn't take accountability in putting stuff in the wash bay prior to storms, like to move stuff out, like, does that, you know, are you robbing it in a way to do it? But yes, but that's still storage undercover that can be used if that's not being used to.
Thank you.
So there, his, the rec department has mowers and things and when they were getting those things in some prior discussions, they talked about, they would store them as opposed to Public Works. Will those things move to this new building or where do they go or where will the rec department?
Rec is growing. I already have all some stuff from rec, so I expect it will end up there. But they built that building that's out here by the tower. That's where they currently stir their mowers and like their pickup and stuff like that, the tractor. When that arrives, it'll be in there. There's gonna be some shared stuff of going.
Okay, and lastly, I'm concerned about the number of trucks. I mean, you did account a hundred trucks or something. But I mean, you add in the fact that the transfer station's on that road, that there might be a need for, consider a traffic light. And have you thought about that?
So I believe that's gonna be looked at, that you have DOT spill-in project that's currently going on. From what I heard, there's a possibility that that will be installed hopefully by the state.
I mean, for safety reasons, I mean, when you think about, you know, the number of trucks and then adding the transfer station, trucks and vehicles, you know, thirty-five is a busy road. And, you know, there are times when you have to be careful exiting Moody Road on Route thirty-five. So I think it would be worthwhile if the state were pushed to consider traffic.
Transfer station's about six thousand vehicles per week, just transfer station.
Wow, okay, thank you.
Yeah, there are obviously requirements for traffic, so it's almost, we don't have to go into that this evening. That is something we would look at as we go through a further design. One thing I will say is that by the fact that we're kind of relocating this on the same roadway, it's really, you know, if you were to reoccupy the existing facility, you know, not even building onto the new site, but just utilizing the existing garage for off-seasonal storage of things like mowers and other things, you know, that'd be a great use of that space. Because, you know, lawn mowers don't need quotable drinking water, it's employees that do. So it's a great place to just store equipment for, you know, long durations like mowers or sidewalk machines or anything along those lines. Yeah, absolutely, that we would look at that. But I, this isn't, this project itself is not gonna significantly increase traffic on Moody Road.
Okay.
Um, I, I have to ask because it's the nature of the beast. We're putting up this new facility that, that's the plan, down at the transfer station? You know that, you know that there's gonna be extra space down there that people are gonna want to use. How far down the road are we looking at expanding the transfer station?
Well, we're hoping to get an impact fee in place to be able to do that in the future. And again, once we have the impact fee, we're gonna go to start to this conceptual design and what is the cost of that? So do I see something maybe in five years as far as the design? Yes, but the next phase, if something were to get approved, would be to look at getting an impact fee in place for the future development to help pay, to look at that future and what that would be.
Five years, thank you.
I'm saying for a design for that, I'm not saying.
Yep, I gotcha.
Yeah.
That's like the start of it.
Yeah.
I got it, thank you.
And just, I just, while you were just talking about that, I brought the aerial backup that shows the facility just to illustrate again that transfer station's kind of asked out capacity where it currently is. So having the ability to expand into some of that space is currently being used by Public Works would obviously be very beneficial in the future.
Oh, yep, I, I, I know it's, I know it's a, it's a thing that really has to be done, but I want to make sure that I asked the question.
Yep.
Five years from now, maybe starting on the project where we've got, we're still working on eleven million to pay off. I just want to make sure that people are aware.
You've got two people I'd like to hear, so only two.
We don't put it out to the public yet.
You don't?
Ourselves.
Okay, I'll go and do it at all.
So thank you for the information, definitely bringing it, bringing it to us. Both have great, great plans. I can see that obviously one outweighs the other, there's way more benefits to one than the other. Even just the bottom dollar, right? In my mind, though, one thing that I would, I would want to know, though, is like, like you said, John, is this something that we want? It's, it is a need, but is, is it the number one need? Is it the number two, number four? Where does it place on the list of needs for Standish right now? So it would be great if we could do what you were saying and, and look at Standish and go, hey, this is what we need, all, all these things. And then I guess rank them, right, before we go and put them out there and say, hey, you know, I would, you know, I agree. I think this would be amazing and I'd love to see it done in the next few years if we can, if we can do it. And I can't see really anything probably coming up that would be more of a need than this because Public Works is one of your number-one things to keep the town rolling, right? And, and operating. So it's a huge need. So, you know, obviously, we're not here to vote tonight or do anything or pass along or do anything, but is there anything that you need from us at this point?
Uh, no, but you, you talk about the needs and the other need that I see, I'm gonna just talk about it, is the Route twenty-five quarter. So I mean, that's two very substantial projects that have to happen. Ryan and I have talked a little bit about this, but we've talked about, we're hoping to be able to use A, impact fees because of the development that's coming in that area. I know it's a time of progression, but we have ten years to spend that money. And grant money for that, that we talked about. And I think from the general conversation, we were hoping to be able to pay for half. Is that was the number that we, in between grant and impact fee?
For what?
For what, which project?
Uh, for the Route twenty-five quarter, so we're hoping to be able to pay for half of it with the impact fees collected. And half of it would be, I guess, quote-unquote, town funds. But the intent of that always was that once that project goes into a preliminary design phasing, the first thing I'm gonna do is call Region One. phasing, the first thing I'm gonna do is call Region One and start trying to figure out, get them to fund a portion of it. Projects like that are usually considered regionally important, so they usually can get on some sort of like a five-year window with them, hopefully, or at least get into their work plan for partial funding. And hopefully, that partial funding might be your share completely, or at least a large portion of it.
So then we'd, we, are you saying that if we did that, then we would still be able to do the other project as well?
Correct. And that's where I'm saying, right, I try to put this in my head, number-wise, like, what makes sense for the town as far as? That project is, like I said, at least two years of going out to bid and being a voter funded. So would it make sense to wait two years to do this and do it? You know, like, where does the, where does it fit in chronologically to that type of deal?
I think that's totally up to you, and, you know, as the director, definitely bring it forward, and come, I'll bring it to a little workshop if you have more, need more help with it. But yeah.
And the upfront cost for the Route twenty-five and that two-year period you're talking about is just the design, you know, survey, geotech, design, so a much smaller portion of that total dollar amount we were discussing at the meeting for that project.
Transportation committee, we met, we're going to get a survey done, and see the impacts is what the next direction that we're going with that type of deal. But that will be funded through the impact fees type of deal, so we can start the process of that. But it all fits into this big picture of money for the town.
Is thirty-five the state road?
Thirty-five is the state road, but there's, this is compact, so meaning there's a high density, we're urban compact, the town is responsible for maintenance. Infrastructure, depending if the state's requesting it or the town's requesting it, that determines on who's to pay for.
Okay. And so I was, 'cause Mr. Deacon told me my thought on the, the light at that intersection, you know, where is, is the state road? Do we have to have the state do it, you know, do we do it, so?
So, so hopefully, in two thousand and twenty-seven is when that scoping project is supposed to be done. I'm hoping that they meet their timeline of that, and that will give us a lot more idea of what they plan on doing.
And I would just say that any traffic signal needs to go through the DOT, whether you're paying for it or not.
Sure.
At those locations.
Yep.
Because they have to approve them.
Relate that would be turning lanes on Moody Road, potentially, to allow left and right turning lanes instead of just a signal in and out, exit, add turning lanes by helping resort.
All things that we would analyze as part of a future phase. And hopefully, in conjunction with DOT, so we're not doing all the work.
Excellent. Thank you very much. I have a motion, do a adjourn, or does anybody have any other questions?
When will we, will there be more information coming out of this particular project? Do you need to know which direction we're leaning at any point?
Well, I think the, I guess the next phase for me to do is obviously speak to town staff. So there's a couple of things that need to happen with this. A, a zoning change for that side. So no matter what, the town planner and I, which is Zach, met and talked about this, that we feel should be changed to industrial, because it's a municipal use, it's, both uses are allowed in the current zone it is, but building sizes are limited to that, setback differences. Industrial zone is right across the street, so it's not spot zoning or anything of that nature. So his plan, as far as that, is to bring that to you, for whatever project were to go in the slot, as far as municipal use, is make it industrial. So I think you're gonna see that in January, is what he told me is going forward for that. And then with speaking with town staff and going through the process, is the first step that I would do is bring it to capital, and see if it gets support. Then bring it through the budget process and see if it gets support. I mean, like I said, it's a need of the town. Where do we wanna put that?
All right. If I may, I work Travis with the council, and the council talks, and talks to the employees. But whether our interested members of the public, I would urge the chair to at least offer them an opportunity to say any questions or thoughts that they might have. It's at the discretion of the chair.
Does anybody have anything that would like to say?
I would.
Perfect, come on up.
Anthony Volson, Standish President. I just hope that council and everybody look at things that are land that are bonded out to the public. It's the taxpayers that are paying this, for this land, not just calling it's the town land now. It's town people that paid for this. We're the ones that suffer, and we have plans for this land. I'm not saying this is a great project, it's a great location, I understand the other project, but we should have looked at the other land, too, before we bought that. That was also bought. So we have two pieces of land that was bonded, sold to us as a bill of goods, is not being used for. So before we do anything like this again, we should really do our research, dot our i's, cross our t's, and make sure the taxpayers, this, this all, bottom line comes down to us taxpayers. And it seems like, we'll buy this land, we'll do whatever we want. Now, I hear rumors that George Jack might close, that might be where the next rec place is. They're closing that place because it's, needs millions of dollars worth of work. You're gonna bond that off to the taxpayers?
Which one?
We already had land approved, and the project already approved, and that was closed down because it wasn't buildable through the DEP. And now, all of a sudden, it can be built on. My mother would be holding her grave.
Thanks, Tony.
Does she have that? I'm all set.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
I make a motion to adjourn?
Start, Ron.
Good job.
Work by two here.
I'm just, I'm trying to get the presence, and then, and then we have a.